Call the Brandon Select Board to order at 7 o'clock. Is there a motion relative to the agenda?
So moved.
Tracy Wyman moves to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second from Tim Guiles. Any changes to be made to the agenda as it was posted? Is that your hand up, Dave?
I was just moving my light.
Oh, all right.
My face was glowing a little too much.
If there's no changes to be made, all in favor of adopting the agenda as it was posted, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. Any abstentions? That's unanimous. Item two, approval of the select board minutes. What's the pleasure of the board on these three minutes?
Moved to do all three.
Tracy Wyman moves to approve all the minutes of all three meetings, December 14th, 15th, and 30th. Is there a second?
Second.
Tim Guiles has a second. Any errors or omissions in the minutes as they were presented? I don't see any. All in favor of adoption of the minutes as they were submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Unanimous. Item three, town manager's report. Ms. Atherton.
This is my report for the week of January 4th because I was on vacation the week before. So therefore I really didn't do much for the town of Brandon. I've been working with DuBois and Canyon finalizing the design for the Conant Square parking area, which that's what we're calling the one behind the soon to be Dunkin' Donuts. We're looking at construction in late spring, early summer. I don't, I know we discussed it before. I'll just give you a quick, a little brief on that, that we are planning on doing the majority of this work in-house, except for the electrical work, you know, with prepping for paving and everything. So, and Sean's really on board with this one. This will be a fun project, so we're looking forward to it. We've completed the project closeout for Park Street and Union Street. So those are done, off the books. We have been working with bond council to prepare documents for the proposed bond vote on the wastewater treatment plan upgrades. There's stuff in a packet tonight for that. And I did receive a purchase and sale agreement from Nature Conservancy for the two swamp plots. I had reviewed it. We tossed it back and forth a couple of times and I have forwarded on to our town attorney for review. So that should be taking place fairly soon, the sale of that. Rec news, Bill had a lot here to say this time, so I'll try to be quick. The new year rec programming will kick off with their Brandon Free Public Library Collaboration Quiz Night, starting January 9th, and we will be hosting Trivia via Zoom. Colleen Wright is helping the rec to partner with the American Legion and local chef Dallas Lad to create Get It and Go with the sun setting. The Vermont Farmers Food Center, State of Vermont's Everyone Eats Program. We're working on a Brandon-based solution, a monthly donation-funded grab and go meal for anyone who may need food. The first meal will be available for pickup on January 18th at 5:00 PM. Hundred meals will be prepared and distributed at the Legion. We're working on a Brandon mascot competition, so keep an eye out for that contest. And Bill's been working with Otter Valley School District, Unified Union School District, to find a workable solution for indoor sports. Bill and the net should be school principal, along with soar after-school coordinator, met with the superintendent to brainstorm solutions based on current restrictions and health guidance. The agency have added their efforts to mitigate the spread of COVID, are not allowing outside groups to access local schools. So the Vermont Department of Health Guidance requires much in the way of space, masking and limitations on what types of activities in which people can be engaged indoors. Unfortunately, there was not a workable solution to be found. The pod-based nature of the school's education delivery, limited gym space, only half the gym is currently available, the limit on who can use the space. They even considered hiring Bill as part-time employee and running activities as part of the state licensed soar program. The restrictions around co-mangling with other groups outside of the school proved to be too much to overcome for the 21 winter season. A survey of other Vermont gymless rec programs that act as the de facto athletic departments for their area schools confirms our district was unique and their willingness to entertain some creative approaches to creating indoor programming for their community, students, and families. So with that said, the kids aren't going to have anything to do inside for winter. So yeah, it's kind of a bummer, but I'm sure Bill will come up with something else. So that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Dave. That was an admirable effort by the schools and by Bill, and we appreciate that. Is there any question for the town manager from the board tonight? Anything the board would like to ask Dave? Any questions from the public for the town manager tonight? We do have public comment coming right up, and then we have a public comment is possible on any agenda item. So for public comment from the board, I got a couple of pieces of mail I just wanted to highlight. One was the equalization study from the tax department. Dave, I assume that you got this at the town office also?
I don't have it. Sue might have got it.
Sue might have got it? Okay. Anyway, it says the common level of appraisal is 98.56%, which is nice, and the coefficient of dispersion is 5.54%, which is also nice and low. So Sue probably has that. She must have that.
Yeah, I sent it out to everybody on the staff when I got it a couple of weeks ago.
Okay. Sometimes they send stuff in the mail to some of us, and so that's one of those things. And then the other thing I wanted to highlight is something that came to the board in the mail from Comcast. So they're offering high-speed internet access for folks who have had difficulty getting it, and it's only $10 a month. And if that's something that is of interest to you, hey, Bill, you're there. Can you put in the chat the website internetessentials.com? That's their website for this program. It's to help families that maybe have students at home who are doing remote learning and all that kind of stuff. So I thought that was nice of them to reach out to us. Anything else from the board that's not on the agenda tonight? How about members of the public with items not on the agenda tonight? We've got our state representatives here. Anybody care to?
I have a few things, if you don't mind. It's Sue Gage.
Please, Sue Gage.
Just first off, as many of you are aware, the Brandon Fire District canceled their meeting in person, which was supposed to happen tonight, and instead have decided to be, to vote their items by Australian ballot with us on March 2nd. And so we're working together to make that happen. I also had a fairly extensive meeting today with town clerks around the state of Vermont and Will Sennings, who's in charge of elections at the Secretary of State's office. And he spoke about House Bill 48, which is the bill allowing municipal legislative bodies to alter elections slightly during COVID. He said it's set to move very quickly through the legislature this week, and I'm sure our legislators will chime in as well. I think the big things in that bill is it allows municipal legislative bodies to decide both the date of the town meeting and whether to mail ballots to all active voters. In our case, for the town of Brandon, we have three municipal bodies that we're going to be dealing with. One is the town, one is the Brandon Fire District, and the other is Otter Valley Unified Union School District. So this will require some coordination because it's possible that some of the, well, it's possible that Otter Valley Unified Union School District might decide they want their ballots mailed to all the active voters. And there may be towns that elect not to mail ballots to all their voters. So there's, there's going to be some coordination issues. I think it can all be, it can all be done okay, but it is going to require a fair amount more work. One of the other things that the Act allows is for the Secretary of State to alter things slightly. And one of the things that Will said he's going to bring up after the fact is, is that it will be okay to combine municipal ballots. For example, in our case, and I think the Fire District will agree, that it may serve us best to combine the town and the Brandon Fire District onto a single ballot. It will save printing costs and it will save mailing costs if we choose to mail ballots to all of our active votes. So that's it for me.
Thank you, Sue. Can I assume that you're not looking for anything from the board in terms of action until the Act gets passed by legislature?
Correct. There's no action to be taken at this point, but I just wanted to bring everybody up to speed and also just encourage this cooperation between municipalities, which will fall mostly in my lap, but I want to make sure we're all on the same page with that as well.
Representative Jerome.
Thanks, Sue, for that great overview. I just wanted to add that there was a concern about mailing costs, and my understanding is that the fiscal committee in the legislature has allocated $2 million to help towns offset some of the mailing costs. I don't, if I recall correctly, I think that the actual mailing cost was $1.5 million for the general election, but then there's obviously additional costs too. But so anyway, that's at least something to help towns. I'm not sure how that's going to be divvied out. Sue, was that discussed at all in your meeting?
Yeah, sorry, I missed that note. Yeah, the CARES Act is set, it's set up at this point to pay for the mailing of ballots if the towns so choose.
Goodness, great.
And Sue, Sue, will the, will the Board of Civil Authority make that decision or the Select Board or you?
No, the Select Board actually decides whether they want to retain the date of the town meeting and whether they want to mail to active voters. So that's the legislative body of each of the three municipalities that I spoke of earlier. They decide how, how the ballots will be going out, and I will just comply.
So that we don't miss any deadlines? Do you want a sense of the board or do you think that's likely? Don't do that.
Well, I mean, Barry's here. I don't know where the school's headed, but I think we all should, it'd be nice if we were all on the same page. I know for a fact there are some towns that are not mailing ballots. That will be a little complicated, but I think, you know, we're going to, we need to all, all of the clerks in the Unified Union School District need to help each other out with this, I think.
Yeah, Barry, please.
So we, we did hit on that at our last meeting, but nothing, no decisions were made. We're kind of in a wait-and-see mode, but we're with you as far as that goes. Everyone is really looking for consistency or simplicity at least in how it goes forward. We'll talk more about it. We have a meeting this Wednesday. We'll talk more about it, but we're kind of in a wait-and-see mode to see where everyone else was going to position themselves with that.
I tend to think maybe the LART, well, I don't know. I don't know how, I don't know if anybody's reached out to other towns, but I know we've talked some about mail. I would personally like to see the ballots mailed. I think limiting the face-to-face contact is a good thing. Obviously, we will still have a polling place, and it will be open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. But if we can minimize the number of people that are trekking through there, I would greatly appreciate it.
Oh, Sue, I am personally totally.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Barry.
I'll bring it up again at our meeting this Wednesday and see if we can kind of get a little bit more direction. Our situation is a little bit more complex because we do have a district of six towns.
Yeah, Butch.
Hi, Seth and the board and everybody. So the, the current bill that you have in your hands is a bill that has yet to be acted on by the House or the Senate. It's a good example of what may happen. So Seth, to your, to your question about do we take action tonight would be, I think your action would be very, very premature. Right now, the bill is permissive, but it may not end up being permissive on changing dates or mailing ballots and may end up being prescriptive. So we don't know that yet, and it's got a long way to go. So I would caution everybody to just be prepared for whatever the whims of the legislature end up doing. But I do have a question for Sue, if I may, on procedure.
Yeah.
Hi, Sue. I'm wondering, when you said the, and I'm just trying to get a feel for this, when the Fire District and you and the Fire District are going to mail your ballots together, and I think that's a wonderful idea, but is everybody in the town a member of, a member of the Fire District?
According to Ray, they are, because I asked him that.
Yeah. So people that aren't on the water system are still members of the Fire District?
That's what Ray told me.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Clears up the thing in my head. Thank you.
I know when the Fire District has had bond votes, it's all registered voters in Brandon. It's not from the floor of the Fire District.
Bonds are, bonds are different though.
Okay. Dave?
So yeah, we're voting townwide, it'd be townwide because there's still the fire tax portion that isn't, doesn't have anything to do with the water department. So because the Fire Department services the whole town, so we still have that to vote on as a town, which is basically what most of their budget covers anyway, you know, is fire services versus water users.
I just want to make a quick quip, which I'm sure the Fire District will, well, will probably, if we end up mailing ballots, we'll probably put some information in there with the ballots. But what, what is being voted at town meeting for the Fire District? They're, they're attempting to change their year-end so that it coincides with the town year-end, which would be June 30th. Right now, they're October 30th, 31st year-end or something like that. So the budget that they have is not for a tax that will happen next year. The budget that they're proposing is, is the tax that's already been assessed. So it's a, it's a little bit confusing. And then they're hoping to meet again in May, either in person, if it's possible, or, or else I'll have another election for them in order to vote on the budget that will affect our taxes. Does that make sense? Because this budget is bringing them from November 1st through June 30th, which we have already incorporated in the tax rate. It's, it's a little confusing also why we need explanation in with the ballot when we mail it.
So they're going with a short year to make the transition year rather than a long year. Is that fair?
That is correct, and, and the tax rate has already been set and assessed and is in people's tax bills. So they're, we will not be voting on the Fire District tax rate on March 2nd.
Perfect. Other public comment and participation tonight? Representative Jerome.
Sure. I just, I guess I'll just be probably stating the obvious that the legislature convened on January, it's last week on Wednesday, and we took our oath of office and were sworn in on Wednesday and Thursday. And, and I think the other thing I wanted to note that, that, and I hope you all know where this to, the Governor State of Emergency has been extended to March 9th, and then we will be working via Zoom from our homes or home offices until that time at least. And I think it'll be reassessed at that time whether we would be allowed to work, to go back to the state Capitol. I guess I also want to just also note of the tri-partisan or perhaps four, the Republicans, Democrats, independents, and progressive caucus or groups, groups in the State House all signed a joint resolution to discuss and to back, and to discuss their, or to publicly portray their, their disappointment in the behavior of the people who invaded the Capitol. And there's also a request for the resignation of President Trump. So it was signed by 130 members, and, and it had, the wording and the text within the document was in general consensus with the Republicans and the Democrats and the independents and the progressives. So it was a, it was a, really a union of this, of the whole body or almost the whole body in their reaction to what happened last week in Washington. And I'm very proud that everyone could come together for a statement, and they sent that statement to the president. I think that's all I have, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anyone have a question?
Actually, I do have one more thing. I got reassigned to the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development and also was honored to be given one of the leadership roles, and I'm the ranking member of that committee now. And I'm very pleased that my work in the last legislative session of BNIAM was recognized by the leadership in the, in the legislature. And so I'm really pleased to be given this extra responsibility within the, that committee. And the committee will be, again, looking, will be, have much responsibility in distributing the next round of the CARES Act funds. And so it'll be a big responsibility. Thanks.
Thank you. Congratulations. That's a key committee for sure, and we appreciate your serving on it. And Butch, are you on still institutions or something else?
Actually, Seth, no. I was moved to the vice, to be vice chair of the Transportation Committee, which I'm happy to do. The Speaker asked me to go up there and assist a new chair in that committee, and I, and I told her that I would, and, and so that's where I am, and don't anybody ask me to pave the road.
We have almost nothing left to pave, Butch.
That's right. Okay, good.
So economic development and commerce and transportation. That's great. Those are two wonderful spots for our state representatives to be. Thank you both. Further public comment and participation? Items not on the agenda? If not, can always chime in later. Item five, approved certificate of highway mileage. Mr. Atherton, can you present this?
Sure. It's a good segment. Butch being the, our budget, or on the Transportation Committee, you know. So this is just our annual certificate of highway mileage that we do every year. As you, if you recall, last year, we did make all our segment six changes. We had some changes up in Park Village that we did as well. So it just confirms what we have for class highways and the mileage associated with it, and looking for some approval on that.
Thank you. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'm moved to approve.
Tracy moves to approve the certificate of highway mileage. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Coolidge. There are no changes. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, ready to vote, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Any extensions? That's unanimous. The ayes have it. Item six, the budget and paving appropriation. I want to thank Jan Coolidge and Barry Varian. They're both here tonight. They've been with us on the budget workshops. We've had a number of those with the department heads and the town manager and some limited public participation also, which we also appreciate. So Barry and Jan, thank you very much for your ongoing service and helping us out with that. I think it's, it's really proven useful in my view to have, to have another set of eyes on it, and not just that, but someone on it who both is familiar with the town and at the same time, not in the weeds like Dave might be, you know, kind of knowing where everything is. It's, it's good to anticipate some questions and concerns from the public, and we very much appreciate the Budget Committee's advisory role. Did you, either of you have anything you wanted to chime in on before we get down to it?
Seth, I just wanted to kind of echo, I think, what I had said last year. I appreciate being on that committee. It was very useful for me. I really enjoy being on the inside and seeing what really drives this town, the operation, the management of the town. I can't speak any more highly about how, how well I feel the, the town manager, all the department heads, the Select Board, Jackie should get a, should get a shout out here as well. The preparation that went into that budget planning was just top-notch, and I think that the product is really a result of that. So thank you all for that.
Good comments, Barry, and you're right. Thank you to Jackie for being at those meetings too. Yeah, Jan, go ahead.
Pretty much the same thing as what Barry said. I was so impressed with what we ended up in the final product. I don't know how you guys did it, but hats off to all of you guys. Well done.
Thank you, Jan. Thanks to Dave and the department heads for coming to the board meetings the way that they did. They're well-prepared, and we were able to get some questions asked and answered and make some changes on the spot. And Jackie was able to, you know, give us some results of those changes, even as we were discussing what the impact would be. So that's been really useful. If we're ready, I'm going to make a motion, just because I've sketched out the math here. So I move that we submit to the voters for approval a spend, to spend the amount of $3,244,020 in the fiscal 2021 to 2022 budget year, of which the sum $2,744,135 is to be raised by property taxes. Is there a second to my motion?
Sorry.
Second is heard. For discussion, I'll just point out that the overall spending that the town is proposing to the voters is actually down 0.6%. And the amount to be raised by taxes that we are proposing to ask of the town is up less than 1%. It's up 0.9%. Some more discussion on the proposed budget.
Are those numbers written somewhere, Seth? Is that the budget that was recently sent out to us?
Exactly. Yeah. But it's the budget that it, it was sent, I believe, on 7th of January is the most recent time we got this.
Okay. Thanks.
I can add that. So Tim, it's the, from our last budget meeting, the one that Jackie updated the next day. That's the same one. I just sent it out so everyone would have it for tonight. But yeah, if you just take the, you know, the total, the total revenues and subtract the total expenses, that's where we come up with our differences. And then basing it on last year's same things, the total expenses and total revenues, and that's how we come up with the number. But both those numbers are right in the budget, so.
Okay.
It's the last page.
Seth?
Charlene?
I got the first figure. I just wanted to confirm the second. $1,350, okay, thank you.
Yep. Further discussion? Any public comment? Ready to vote? All in favor of proposing the budget on the amounts that I just stated, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. It's unanimous. And then I also move that we have a $100,000 paving appropriation. To be worded, shall the voters of the town of Brandon appropriate $100,000 for paving projects to include Florence Road, High Pond Road, and other paving projects as identified by the Highway Foreman to be raised by property taxes? Is there a second? Brian Coolidge has a second. Thank you. Discussion on the paving article. This is the same amount that we requested last year, which means there would be no net impact on the property tax bill. This will not raise or lower property taxes. It will maintain property taxes for paving at the same level that they were last year through the article. Public comment? Ready to vote? All in favor of the paving article of $100,000 to include Florence Road, High Pond Road, and others as identified by the Highway Foreman? Say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Unanimous. Item seven, the town report and town meeting discussion. We just got a little preview of town balloting from Sue and Butch and Stephanie, and that's been helpful. But the big topic is discuss inclusion of the school report in the town report, and I wonder if Tim. And I wonder if Tim might introduce that. Tim's been working with the school district.
Yeah, I, I talked with Jean Collins originally, and she put me in touch with her executive assistant, Melinda. And we've been talking about the benefits to both parties of combining the school report into the end of our annual report. This basically saved us both half the mailing costs because they're going to pay half of our mailing costs to mail out the books. And even though they're going to still be sending out books to other towns, they won't have to print up the books for Brandon. And we found out that we can make the dates work, which has been very important because their statutory deadline is such that they, they actually have to have their books out a little bit earlier than ours. But it's only by about a week. And so we've, we figured out that we can make it all work. And so at this point, if the board is approving of it, we're, we're planning on going ahead and including the book, the school department material in our book this year with the hopes of next year having it so the fire department comes in. And then we'll have all of the information in one book and it will be a reference tool for our community members that will be complete.
Thank you, Tim. Any, any folks with some input on that? The idea, basically, yeah, go ahead, Doug.
I'd just like to say, but certainly by sharing this, it saves both entities money by publishing the book together. And clearly in another year, if we're able to add the fire department in, it would be a three-way splitter in some manner. Of course, the fire district wouldn't use as much as we do. So this could be a savings to the taxpayers in the town of Brandon.
Other input comments? Sue Gage?
I, I think it's a great idea. And I think it also shows the taxpayers exactly where their tax dollars are going, especially if we, oh, sorry, I'm echoing. Especially if we, you know, combine the fire district as well. I think it makes it, it's clarifying to the taxpayers that these are the municipalities that their tax dollars support.
Yeah, I do think that it's an admirable goal. And I think that this year's town report is a transition kind of town report for presentation purposes. And it makes sense to make this a transition year. And then perhaps, you know, look, look to next year where we could present all three of the tax, taxing entities in the one book. That would be, I think, helpful to people. I don't know that we require a vote. So if, if it's, if there's no objection, I think it's going to proceed in that direction. Sound fair? Anything else to be said on the town report or the town meeting? Tim, do you want to give a little update on what we're doing on the town report?
Um, yeah, sure.
Just for fun?
The brief update is that we're hoping to make the town report more inviting so people will read more of it. And, and so we're trying to streamline and kind of make the format a little easier on the eye. And we found that the book up in Derby has a particularly nicely laid out book. And so we're using their person to format our book. And this is about the same price as what we paid last year, so it's a good bargain. And, you know, with this, we're hoping that the book will be more of a reference tool. So people that want to look up information will be able to keep this on their bookshelf and find information that they might need, whether it's contact information or aspects about different programs in the town, recycling center, you know, hours, every kind of possible context that you might expect to get service from the town is in some ways in our annual report.
Thank you, Tim. I realize I didn't prep you up that I was going to ask you to speak on that. But thank you for, for doing that. I want to thank you, Tim, very much, and Doug to a lesser degree for being part of the working group. The select board authorized a working group and open meeting law allows a working group for, specifically for compiling the town report. So Tim and Doug and I meet on Zoom every Sunday afternoon for an hour or two. And of course, we do a lot of work in between those meetings too, to try to, we're trying to make the content of the book that has been bolstered in the last couple of years, thanks especially to some asks we've made of Sue Gage and that she has cheerfully met. We're trying to make the content, as Tim said, even more readable and understandable. And it's been an exciting project. And it's been one that's been on the back burner for a couple of town report seasons, at least by now. So I'm glad that it'll come to fruition this year.
May I chime in, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
With that great introduction you gave me there, I just feel I need to say, clearly thanks to Jackie and Elaine and Dave for information that they have, they have given you guys. But I, knowing that we've got 18 or so people on, online tonight, take advantage of this. Tim and Seth have done an amazing amount of work on this and should be recognized for that. And all the other selectmen should realize how many hours they have put in. My, my part has only been to listen and give some little bit of comment. But Tim has been really working hard with the people up north and putting his book together. And Seth has been using his writing skills. And we should have a really very different town report this year from that. And these two gentlemen clearly get all of the, did all the work. They did all the heavy lifting. So they should be recognized. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Bailey. I did submit to Dave for the packet this week, a draft of a select board report for the town book. And if you have edits that you want made or additions you want made or things you want removed, that kind of thing, you can let me know now or you can let me know, you know, within the next few days. I think Tim has indicated we might have a draft copy of the book as early as the end of this week. Does that sound?
Yes.
I think that's a possibility or early next week. So this is my draft. It's, it's something I've done for a few years. But if, it's totally open if the board wants to go in a different direction. So again, you can, we can work on that outside of the meeting. That's, that's authorized. And if anyone has something tonight, yeah, Bill Moore?
Does that draft include the school information?
We will be getting the school information on the 18th. And, and so that's going to, and, and their, their material will come through as a single chunk. Now those, we're not going to be doing any reformatting. It's going to look exactly like all the other towns' school reports. We're just going to stick it on the end of our book and then index it properly so you can find it in the table of contents.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Anything else on town reports and town meeting? I did want to lob one idea out to you because you're all movers and shakers and probably a lot more imaginative and creative than I am, the most boring man in Brandon. If we're having a town meeting via Zoom or whatever, and it, you know, it's pretty probable we're going to, I think one of the things that has been a nice feature has been the presentation of the dedicated copy of the town report to the honoree. And Pittsford, I think, has the habit of doing theirs ahead of the town meeting. And it seems like I've seen Lee write some newspaper articles, maybe a week ahead or something like that. So I don't know if we need to brainstorm some ideas about how we could make a presentation in a meaningful way. If you wanted, if you think Zoom is the meaningful way because there might be a lot of people called in to see it, that, that's a possibility. But, you know, those of you who are, who are clever about events and stuff like that, the honoree has been selected, but it's still a carefully guarded secret. Yes, Bill? Did you have a hand up?
Oh, no, I was, I was gesturing to my daughter.
So thanks if anybody wants to offer some, some thoughts on that to the board. If we can move on, we got number eight, which is a potential bond vote for wastewater treatment plant upgrades. And we've got Sue and Dave. Either one of you care to introduce this to the board? The result of some sessions we've already had is the Board of Liquor Control Commission, the Board of Wastewater Control Commissioners with the engineers and then following without them.
I can start. No problem. So Sue and I were, were working with Paul Giuliani, who's like the bond counsel of, you know, pretty much in the state that we, we've dealt with on some other bonds for Park Street and I think Champlain Street Pump Station too. So we have some requirements we have to do if this is going to take place on the March ballot. So in your packet, you see that there's actually a copy of the warning for the special meeting for the, the bond. There's the, a copy of the ballot, the resolution certificate, the certificate of posting for publication and vote, and the declaration of official intent to reimburse certain expenditures. So this is, this is the stuff that we've done with every bond vote. This is for the wastewater plant upgrades. So this would be, you know, the, the, kind of like what we just talked about with the fire district. The whole town gets to vote even though the cost is, is on the sewer users. So that's what I have. Hopefully you guys have had a chance to look at it. And looking for some approval if we choose to move forward with it.
Thank you, Dave. What's the pleasure of the board on these documents related to the wastewater treatment plant?
Yeah, I move that we move forward on this bond issue.
Tim moves to proceed. Doug Bailey seconds. We have had some extensive discussion at the Board of Wastewater Commissioners level. Is there further discussion here? I think this is a great project and it's timely. And we did mention it also in the, in the town report in a couple of different spots. So if there's no further discussion, ready to vote? All in favor of signing and proceeding with the required documents to do the wastewater treatment plant upgrade bond vote on March 2nd, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Unanimous. Item nine.
Can I say one quick thing regarding that? So even though you're voting to approve that ballot, it's, it's likely that that ballot will be included on the townwide ballot. There won't, there won't be a separate ballot, is what I'm going to.
Perfect. Yeah, excellent. Item nine, is there a motion on the two warrants or one of the two or? Brian Coolidge moves to approve both warrants. Second from Tracy Wyman on both warrants. Is there any discussion? Any questions on the bills?
Just one, and I think I've answered it myself. On the first page, the solar bill. That's, we just, we sell them electricity and then we, or we rent them the property and we, we buy the electricity.
Yeah, it's the same one we've been doing for about three years, Tracy.
Yeah, okay.
Good question, good answer. Other questions? If not, all in favor of approval of both warrants, a general fund warrant of $52,915 and 24 and a Route 7 warrant of $8,831 and 61, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Perfect.
Can I take this opportunity?
Please.
To just chime in, I've been encouraged by Sue, which is here as well, but I'll say it as, as much. We're just all reminded to sign these tomorrow morning if at all possible.
Excellent reminder.
It's something that sometimes slips through the cracks with these crazy Zoom sessions, so.
Thank you for that. We should all get to the town office to sign the, are they going to be on the back porch, Dave?
Yeah, that's, well, yeah, that's probably the easiest place to put it. Then you, guys don't have to come in, so.
Okay.
Actually, Tim, I, I'll leave you, I'll leave you a book out there.
Great.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
If I don't forget, between now and 20 minutes later, I'll have one out there for you.
Do you think by like 9 o'clock?
Elaine will put them out the minute she gets here, so I'll just leave everything on her desk.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks, guys.
Are there any other announcements? What we'll do is we're going to have to recess the select board, have a Board of Liquor Control Commissioners meeting. And then when that's over, we'll come back as the select board for this executive session that's on the morning. Is there any announcements at this time? I do thank you all for attending and for your participation and input. So at 7:45, the select board's going to recess and I'll call the Brandon Board of Liquor Control Commissioners to order. Is there a motion on the agenda for liquor control?
I'm, and I second.
Motion by Bailey and a second by Giles to adopt the agenda as it was posted. Any changes to be made? If not, all in favor of the adopting the agenda as posted, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Any abstentions? That's unanimous. The ayes have it. Item two, approval of the minutes of November 9th. Wow, two months.
Motion to approve that.
Aye.
Motion by Mr. Coolidge and a second by Mr. Wyman to approve the minutes of November 9th. Are there any errors or minutes or omissions in the minutes as they were submitted? There are not. All in favor of approval of the minutes, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Item three, there are three liquor licenses. What's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion to approve all three.
Tracy Wyman moves to approve. Tim Giles seconds to approve the three liquor licenses. Brandon Discount Beverage and Tobacco, Union Street Grocery and Walgreens. Any discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Any abstentions? It's unanimous. The ayes have it. Item four. Move to adjourn from Mr. Coolidge. Is there a second?
Aye.
Second from Mr. Wyman. Not debatable. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Perfect. We're adjourned at 7:47.